Yes, Brad.
Yes.
I published the notice of hearing in the newspaper for the requirement of the law. I had no way to contact regarding that. Regarding the hearing, so I would ask the board to approve a motion to close the hearing.
Questions or comments on that? Got a motion to close the hearing on 2013, 2014 district closing. Motion made by Stephanie is your second. Second by Kim.
Kim Brown.
Yes.
Mike Staub.
Yes.
Mike Oakley.
Yes.
Stephanie Merrill.
Yes.
Pat Peters.
Yes.
Brad Santola.
Yes.
Okay, we'd like to welcome all our visitors here this evening. And Mr. Fowler, do we have any public participation this evening?
Uh, we do have. Uh, Mr. Mike Orton is here and he has called to my office to ask to make a presentation as a board. So. I'd actually recognize him.
Our taxes. This other brand on Iran shows apparently the other. One left. My question is, how much? Oh, I'm sorry. If you read that, let's see how much we pay versus the other schools already. And that doesn't include your $100,000 loan issue, is that right, Ernie?
Uh, no, I don't think that was listed.
Well, on the county clerk's it does.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think.
So we're going up. My biggest concern is when I get on the school website, I see words like "find the sky" and "desperate attempt to keep the doors open for a few more years." What does that mean, guys? And any family come to our community in Harris Town, they're gonna look at that and go, "Why would I move here?" When you see words like that on our website. So where are we headed? That's my biggest question.
Well, we got, if you're talking about my Scotty referring to Mr. Fowler's, uh, when we were questioned about the new building somewhere in the future, that's kind of just a dream 10 years down the road because we got ourselves on the list, which takes typically 10 years to even get closed.
Okay.
To have any state funds, oh, I'm done.
Okay.
To have any state funds. And that's just a dream for down the road for a school. Now, we may never achieve that, especially if our enrollment continues.
Correct. I agree with that statement. Here's a question pretty easy. When this tool is merged up, why weren't we put on that list? You know, we had AG tools at the time. Why were we not on that list prior to now?
Uh, Mr. Fowler is the one that got us on that list, I can tell you that. I don't have a good answer for that.
You were on board at the time, right?
I was on board at the time, yeah.
Okay.
There's six other people on that board too. Do you mind asking any one of them? Why didn't get on?
I will, I will. You know, we're a little late coming to the game. It appears to me the stage is broken.
How long, how long ago did you get us on the list? Three years ago?
No, two or three years.
It's been two or three years. Obviously, everyone said something about putting them on the list. I agree. But when you go to our site and we see that, when I read that, "A desperate attempt to keep the doors open for a few more years," and I talk to people around, they have kids coming back, they're like, "We're not coming back here."
Well, we're.
And that's that's it. It is.
We're in a lot of their shape in a lot of districts around here, I can tell you that.
Well, when you look at, we know 10 years ago, nine years ago, we consolidated. If we wouldn't have been on that list at that time, and right now we're in situations where we were looking at building a new school, or if we broke ground, even some of the other districts around that are, you know, in financially difficult right now, that aren't too far down the road. So I'd say, actually, we're probably lucky that we don't have.
We don't know. All of them have basically new studies or updated facilities.
But look at the debt they have, Mike.
They may have that, but they also, look at your taxes. Their people are still paying less than we are now.
And they're laying off teachers right and left to be able to pay for that.
I wager their teacher class size is gonna be similar when you reorganize. Our homeowners saving prices of this school district have been a low, 15 kids a class, whatever, straight. Now we've come to believe we can't afford it anymore. They came to act as a place a long time ago. You know, and that's gonna be one of our advantages. If you talk to a person up in the community, you'll say, "Yeah, you know, they only have 15 kids a class." This is fixing to change. Because we realize we can't afford it anymore either.
You understand, don't you? Since you gotta look at the financial makeup of each district, what they have, what their subsvaluations.
That's correct.
All that in order to determine the tax rate. You can't take, unless two districts are exactly the same with exactly the same square miles, you can't make a match as far as the tax rate goes, Mike.
You won't. I agree. But that's why you've gotta look somewhere else. The schools are merging up and that's what's happened, because they realize they can't afford it. When you go and you do the reorganization, which I totally agree with you, we gotta do something. But when I read "a desperate attempt," it just doesn't settle off.
You know, not everybody chooses it worse.
I agree, and that's why you're just being honest about it, and that's the case. I agree.
I'm not sure if my words are correct at times, I'm sure you have any.
I'm sure that's right.
And I think probably schools all, you know, across the state of Illinois, about our size, and I'm from Southern Illinois, I can tell you that their districts, our size are smaller down there, they probably will all phrase it a similar way. We're in a fight with the state of Illinois to keep our schools. And whether we're in Central Illinois, Southern Illinois, I think it is a desperate attempt for schools our size to keep built. There's value in schools our size. You know, and like you pointed out, the fact that we do have, um, smaller class size numbers.
That's another one.
And it may have to financially go away. Um, it's a fringe benefit that we have now, it's a great benefit. And if we can, if we can afford it, that would continue to be a great benefit. You know, but we look down the road and preserving what we do have, so.
Well, when you look at our tax rate, and if the saving income off our matching funds, where are you gonna get that other side of it? I mean, I realize you're getting some sales tax money, but our taxpayers, they're leaving. You know, why wouldn't they come here?
And it might be, you know, it might be, I'd say, all, you know, 10 years down the road, because they'd have to go to a referendum, the voters would have to decide whether or not.
And when they see they're already higher.
We go that.
Why would they do that?
Well, as far as our taxpayers are leaving, I think when you look at other schools around the area, I think they're leaving there too. So I don't think this is a situation.
Agreed. They're leaving Illinois.
It's just, it's just.
So when our only development, Harris Town, gets sold its farm around by our home bank here in Niantic, does that not speak volumes? But they haven't gone up for anything either? Um, that's, to me, that's.
Well, it does, but I'll tell you what, I'll tell you, here's my personal philosophy on the schools and communities. And some of you may really miss, some of you not, an old guy told me this, my first time on board, an old board member, been on board a long time. He said, you know, the schools need to care about their communities, but it is not the school's job to save any of these communities. All these, all three of these communities need growth, and obviously, any of them working. Obviously, any of them working, just like what you said, they sold that, they sold the, they sent a vision for them. So it's really, our job is, the school's job is to save ourselves. You know, if the towns start growing, the school will benefit from that, but it's not the school's job to save any of these communities.
Each community needs to get out and sell itself.
The biggest draw we have, the only thing we've got going, name of others we've got other than the landfill, the school is the only thing that will draw people out here.
We got, turn, people work at Monsanto, that thing drew them crazy, that's the only other thing I can think of.
And that's about it? You're right?
Yeah.
And those probably are decent jobs.
If there's, if there's, if nothing here is not agricultural related or.
That's right. It's a problem, I agree with you, good point. Now, my other question is, I, did I read the minutes right, Ernie, that you only interviewed one person for a fourth grade position? Uh, is that correct?
No, no, it's not, you've discussed personnel.
Well, this is not. But there's lots of teachers out of work, and I wonder what board policy was on that subject?
Well, we hired the best people we could find, and I had a candidate on short notice that I thought would do a good job, and myself and Mrs. Hawkins interviewed that candidate. If that person had not, we didn't think could cut it, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have hired that person. I think we have an excellent fourth grade teacher that we hired, and I stand behind her.
Well, I agree, but the board needs our policy to interview. When you have, probably, I don't know, I mean, I would guess, but I would guess at least 50 elementary ed teachers wanting to look for a job. If you call them for a job, they would show up.
Well, I'm, I'm of the opinion, when I find somebody I want, I go after them. If it's one, for the hundred.
But see, you've got a conflict. Because the one is tied in and the others are not.
Well, I mean, that, that, I can't help because who she was born into and certainly not.
That's right, and that's not her fault.
No, but then it's not.
But it still becomes a conflict when you sit on board and you get preferential treatment.
Well, I don't consider it a preferential treatment. She's qualified.
I agree. I don't disagree, she may be the best candidate, but why would, why wouldn't you interview several just to be sure?
I didn't need to interview several, I found one I wanted, and I went to her.
Yeah, this is probably a one-year position or whatever, and that's one thing that we discussed. We hired a candidate who was probably gonna be a one-year position, and she was aware of that at the time. She went ahead and took the job, gets her a little bit of experience, and next year she knows she's probably not gonna have a job.
I agree with that point too, except for the fact, if I'm sitting over here and have no job, and have a chance for you to have a job for a year, would you not take it? Would you not take the job, if you got offered a job for a year, versus no job at all? Knowing that there's lots of elementary ed teachers out of work? That's just my point, and my question. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Public participation? Consent agenda? Anyone have any questions or comments?
I had, I gave you your consent agenda. I recommend approval.
Questions or comments this time?
You know, this, I just got new bills tonight. I just now got them. I talked to Ernie about an hour ago, about the one that I had a question about. This Hinkley Springs, we're going through $217 worth of water a month.
Probably.
Is it just here at the high school?
Uh, we have it here at the high school, I don't know, do you guys have it over there? And the reason for that, which kinda made it look bad on me, like I'm addicted to Hinkley Springs, or I couldn't care less about it actually, but it's stored in the back of my office, the water here in Niantic is not too swift to drink. And so they use that for cooking and for the, for the kids to drink and all that, so. I had them take it off the superintendent's office, because it made it look like I got special water, said I was too good to drink Niantic water, and that's not the case, I don't even use it.
So our cooks are doing it?
Yeah, our cooks use it to cook.
Is there any way that we can use? I know now they sell like, you know, pictures with the front filters in them, they're not be cheaper to, that way we're utilizing the water that we're actually buying from Niantic?
I think it would depend on, you know, the volume of water and, that's not what I was talking to the cooks about, I don't know, I mean, the volume of water they use, I don't know.
Can we look at that?
Yeah.
Have we already discussed this?
Have we?
Oh, yeah. Have we already discussed this?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we did.
Some of the superintendents, someone wanna know why it was under the superintendent's
bills a couple months back, and I'll explain it then.
All right, any other comments or questions? No, I dare to take a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion made by Brad is your second. Second by Kim.
Call roll, please. Kim Brown.
Yes.
Mike Staub.
Yes.
Mike Oakley.
Yes.
Stephanie Merrill.
Yes.
Pat Peters.
Yes.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
I'm the superintendent's report, a couple things to talk about this season. First of all, we've had some discussion about our, our high school bleachers, and we've, we've worked, Mr. Meadows and I have worked quite a bit on finding a solution to the issue, and the fact that they do, um, look bad as far as cleanliness. And what we've found, a couple things. The ones we had, a company come out, um, called Paddock Bleacher Service. They come out to look at our bleachers. We got a problem, first of all, with the high school bleachers. The rollers are worn out, and so they won't go back in. Those are gonna have to be repaired, or we're gonna have to just have our bleachers out all the time. One of the others might not be functional for Coach Myers and his basketball program. Um, so we're gonna have to do that. The cleanliness issue is kind of a strange deal. I contacted McMillan, which is our custodial company that comes and provides us chemicals. And the guy came and said he had a super fantastic cleanser that would clean the bleachers. He got in there and he scrubbed, and he scrubbed, and he scrubbed, and he scrubbed, and he said, "You know what? Get new bleachers." Because his didn't do it. Mr. Meadows came into my office one day with sweat rolling off his face because he had found the wonder cure, and he was going to clean those bleachers, and he came in and he said, "Well, we can't do it." We called two bleacher companies about it, "What do you guys have to clean bleachers like this?" Both of them said, "There's nothing to get it clean." So we've, we've had a hard time finding the answer. Our answer may be in our backyard. I had James Marksberry come in, and I said, you know, he was here at 6:30 with me, and he was working up the sweat, working on the bleachers. And James has found something that won't make them look like new, but he made better progress than any, anything else was found. So James didn't get a quote, and James didn't wanna say anything about the...
No. He just came to visit for the board, he didn't know he was gonna be put on the spotlight. No, I mean, I just, I'm gonna call a company I get my chemicals from, and I maybe test it again with something, maybe that I can get something stronger, test it and see what it does, but I'm just using a basic degreaser, and it's nothing that's gonna be harmful, strong chemical smell, I mean, it's maybe stronger when it's clean, but nothing really harmful. It's a disinfectant and a degreaser, so.
I talked today to Carol Seating, these are the folks that put the, uh, the bleachers in over at the middle school, and they said, "What happens with the kind of bleachers we have, they're called Irwin bleachers, and the sub, the surface of those bleachers are kind of a rough surface." For those of you who've sat on those bleachers, you run your hand over, or even the floor part, it's kind of a, a rough surface. What happens, according to Carol, is that the dirt or the grime or whatever is spilled actually becomes embedded into the surface of, of the bleachers. And so that's causing a problem. Now, James did a pretty decent job of getting it cleaner. He did, he got cleaner, the floor part of it, and you can still see that it's bleeding through. But he did a really good job, and he tested a couple of the actual seats, and I could tell a big difference in the two that he did versus the ones on either side he didn't do. So we have a partial solution. I, uh, I talked to Carol because, we had talked at first Paddock about repairing the rollers, and they said, "Well, it would probably cost you to do, to replace the rollers and the motors, service it at about $12,000." Mr. Meadows found it at $12,000. And we just for the heck of it said, "Well, what would it cost to replace the seats on the bleachers? Not replace the entire structure, but just the seats and do a refurb." And they said, "Well, that'd run you probably around $48,000," which I can't, there's no way why I recommend that, because those seats are not in bad shape, they just need James to do magic on them, to be clean. And then we said, "Just for the heck of it, why don't we just rip them out? Got the ones in." He said, "Oh, you're looking probably $80,000." So we said, "Okay, hang up the phone, because we don't need to do that." Carol Seating, on the other hand, we talked to them, and they said, "Well, they can come in and replace the rollers," which they have in stock, the other company did not have the rollers in stock, "but Carol Seating said they'll come in and fix the rollers $7,500." We said, "Well, what about the motors?" Because the other company said, "We need to go ahead and replace the motors." Carol Seating used a rather harsh word and said, "You don't need to replace the motors." The motors oughta work for about 30 years, those, those bleachers were put in about 1998. He said, "However, we do recommend, for about $2.75 a seat, we go ahead and service the bleachers while we replace the rollers, make sure they're lined up right, and make sure everything is, is working properly." So we think to do that with Carol Seating is about $9,700 versus $12,000 for, um, the other company. And like I said, we're gonna have to do something to get those bleachers in, or else we just can't have them in. And that jam, as Coach Myers is not here yet, he's, or he's in surgery. Can you have basketball practice without side投?
It'd be pretty tough. And not like that with PE as well, it'd be tough to do that in there, and we have volleyball going on now, which would be, I mean, they're, they're making do because they can use the middle of the court, but, um, they can do the two sides and still be able to have the bleachers out, but it's pretty tough for the basketball PE to be inside with the bleachers out.
So we, we probably, we probably just need to buy, buy off this and do the $9,700 roller case and get this done. We're a few weeks out from the season starting, for basketball season. James said probably, uh, he could maybe, uh, next week, as long as he's not gonna charge $8,000 to clean the bleachers, uh, he could do a good cleaning of them, and then we could follow up, probably, um, Carol can be here in the next two weeks and fix the rollers. You know, so that's kind of the direction I'm thinking we need to go.
Any questions, comments on bleachers?
Any objection to me doing that with fixing the rollers?
So we're just, we're just gonna fix them? Your recommendations to fix the rollers?
Yeah, I would say do the rollers at this time.
And not the seat, not have just the seats around?
Well, I would go ahead, while they're here, and do the servicing. I mean, I, I think that, that might save us trouble down the road.
So your recommendations? It's been $9,700.
Or $12,000.
If you don't want it up, you don't want the rollers out, and the rollers, where the rollers do, if you want them up.
So these were put in in 98?
That's what, that's what, from the best of our knowledge, it's around 98.
So we shouldn't expect to get 10 to 15 years on new rollers?
Yeah, he said the life of the rollers are about 10 years.
So this is 15 years?
Yeah, it's been 15 years, so actually, the rollers should have died five years ago. We did better.
Everybody care of that?
The other I might have is, um, one of the recommendations for next year, which, which we can do is regarding the pre-K program. As you know, for the last three years, we've received no funding for pre-K, um, here. And the cost of running a pre-K program, the late years now, is about $76,200. And as I said, you know, there comes a time that maybe you have to think about how long we can continue to do that. We've spent over three years of no funding, 227,000 plus dollars on pre-K programs. And one of the things that, that was, has an idea that to cut costs is to do away with it. Now, we understand, um, many folks see the value, and I think our principals can see some of the value in the pre-K program. So we thought maybe as a step prior to just eliminating it, maybe we ought to have a tuition to pay for it. We've heard for three years, parents say, you know, "If you didn't do away with the pre-K program, we'd pay for it." Well, when I put the numbers to it, the cost is gonna be, next year projected, about $77,700. In order to break, about break even, really, the tuition for each child for 34 weeks of pre-K, half-day program, would be $2,600 a year. I don't see that the parents here can afford $2,600 a year, that'd be $75 a week for a half-day pre-K program. I'd love to be able to have that money to invest back in the pre-K, I just don't see, I think it'd be a strain on our parents to do it, but honestly, I just don't think we'd have any parents willing to do that. So I backed down maybe the tuition, rather than $2,600 a year, I backed it down to $850 a year. And that would be about $25 a week for 34 weeks that parents could pay for pre-K, and that sounds a lot more reasonable to me than $75 a week for the pre-K program. That would generate about $25,500 if we can get 30 kids in the program. Can't promise that we get 30 kids in the program, ideally, that's what we, we hope to get, to get 30 kids. I see that as a stopgap measure before we could do away with the program. And, um, one thing we have to consider is, for early childhood students, for those students that are, um, three, four-year-olds, that have individual education plans, federal law says they're in our district, we must educate them. And so if we don't have a program, then it'll be up to us to tuition those kids to another site. The tuition to do that runs about $8,500 per child. And we usually have three children qualified for early childhood, sometimes it might be four, but roughly three children. So no matter what we do, we're gonna have, we're gonna be on the hook for a cost of about $25,500 to educate the pre-K, i.e. P-kids. So when you look at that, $25,500, you're gonna be out in any way it goes, and if we could generate $25,500 for, on revenue, that means the cost for us to host a pre-K and EC program would be $26,710. And that's better than the $77,710 that we would have to pay if we continue to do things that we are this year. So it's basically about a $50,000 difference. So I guess what I'm saying is, charging the parents the $25 a week, what we would be doing would be asking the parents to pick up 32% of the programming cost. And then the district would pick up the other 68% of the programming cost. And again, it's a gamble, because you might have 30 kids, you may have 10 kids, but it's a stopgap before you simply eliminate the program. And like I said, I think that pre-K program, from what I understand, seems to be, um, near and dear to the heart of the people in our school district. And it's a, it's a chance for you to try to save it and not use an accident.
Can we still apply for the grant yearly to see if we can ever get money back?
The grant is closed, except to folks that have.
Has anyone ever given you a good reason why? There's no fairness in how those grants are distributed. I don't. I mean, you get, you get people in Northern Illinois that get 100% funded. I don't understand why districts get 100% funded, that's obviously a theory of why.
Well, Clinton got some, a certain amount of money, and they had to want and thank people that got into their program. They didn't even have enough kids to have the program for all the money that they got, and then we did nothing.
I don't, I don't understand, because I think the fair thing to do would be to take a pot of money and divide it up amongst however many districts in the state, and want to have a pre-K program, but they, they don't do that. And I can tell you that one thing, a reason that we didn't get it last time was, um, we were considered, um, to not have enough of a minority population, and that's where they wanted, that's where they wanted to put some money. And again, with, um, you know, whole notion of North versus South, and I don't wanna get on soapbox of politics, but, you know, two groups have been off of.
So the magic number is 30 kids?
30 is what we're hoping for, I think, as well.
Since we are funding this ourselves out of the district, if we don't receive 30 applicants, can we, can we take applicants outside of our district? Since we're funding this ourselves, 30 seems to be the number that best utilizes the program. Would that not bring people into the district, bringing their kids to the schools to get pre-K, and maybe give them a chance to see our district and say, "Hey, there's houses for sale out here, there's rooms for rent"?
I guess that might be an option, I have to think about the pros and cons and liability and things like that, I mean, I don't know, it could be. I mean, I don't know, if you guys think of any reason that wouldn't work.
Or is it not law-legal?
Are you just saying we don't need thirty?
Yeah.
Just to fill it?
I mean, we don't, we don't receive general state aid on those kids, so it's not a deal that we're stealing state aid from neighboring school districts. We don't receive any state aid for it, so I don't, you know.
Forty students, forty students are on the waiting list right now.
Yeah, we're serving almost, or they may have forty on the waiting list.
Yeah, but would that list change once they find out they may have?
I'm sure some will, yes.
Our ideal, of course, would be to serve our own kids first, and then, like you said, maybe, that's a possibility, we'd expand out beyond that.
And that wouldn't be something that you'd know about till next spring?
No, because we certainly would want to knock one of our kids out. You know, a parent is willing to do the eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year and knock them out because they're a child from another community coming here. So we would want to make sure that our parents got first dibs on the slot.
And how would we choose? Would we choose them the same way we would choose them now, as far as three and four-year-olds for pre-K?
That's something.
Most needed?
Yeah, we'd probably need to look at that, probably most need and also, and that's something that the principals and I would have to come up with some criteria to get them in. You know, we'd wanna serve, ideally, if we can serve forty, that'd be great, but, you know, I, the issue of paying, I said, we'll probably dislaid some folks from doing. On the other hand, it might also pick up some other folks that might be interested in doing this. So, you know, you might be able to have a little bit of a trade-off there. Like I said, it's just, to me, I thought it was a reasonable way of not axing the program every year and see what it does.
I mean, I think it's a great way to, to help, a great way to help people around. But I think we're probably, we might suggest we do, make a motion to table, get some feedback, and we'll see, see what kind of help we get.
Okay, we will kind of see where we go from there. I'll probably put, within the next couple months, maybe, as an agenda item, because what will eventually come after, we'll have to make a decision whether or not we just eliminate the program, or you kind of go on blind faith that you're gonna, you're gonna come up with these kids, you know, and hope that it works out, so.
Will you have a cutoff for pre-K screening and the timing until your teachers are there longer than the pre-K? So we would have to do this. Is pre-K screening in March or April?
Uh.
Beginning of April.
And that's, that's unfortunate, because the reduction in force notice is go out in March. So, I mean, it's probably going to be, you guys are just gonna have to decide if you're gonna roll the dice, because I can't, you know, so don't come back and hang me if you have ten and say, we're funding an entire program and we only have ten kids on your brilliant idea. You know, I'm saying, hey, you roll the dice. So I'm telling you upfront, you roll the dice. So if you wanna roll it, roll it.
We've got time to table.
Yeah, we've got time to think about it. I mean, you guys have time to think about it. I put on the agenda a couple months ago. We just think time over heads.
Do you have to make a motion on this?
No, it's just, no, it's just, you know, just to kind of let you know one thing.
Okay. That it for?
Yep.
The board's approval, community survey is in the timeline.
We had talked in the past about, about these potential plans of restructuring. We said there were a couple of plans on the table. There's actually three plans on the table. There's the restructuring plan, putting K-5 in Eliopolis to K-5 in Harris County. Then there's the attendance center plan, K-2 in Harris County, 3-5 in Eliopolis. And then Plan Three is, don't worry about it, leave things as it is. What we had talked about is the fact that maybe we need to kind of get a pulse of our communities and find which of the three plans folks are more likely to embrace. You know, they, I don't know, I don't know which way people would vote. It could be that say, hey, write it out, keep things as it is, hey, and you know what? I think if people vote that way, they're not gonna be my biggest fans, because I, you know, I'm okay with that. That's less work on me, so hey, if they vote that way, more power to them. But at any rate, here's, here's the thing, I've given you a tentative timeline that would probably be determined based on statutory reasons if you make a move. First of all, there is an instrument that is attached to this. It's a survey instrument that you would advise. What I'd like to do is send them home with the students at both elementary schools, for those parents, because they're, they're gonna be, you know, maybe most affected, so send those home. Then I wanna have the survey instrument available at each of the middle school and the high school and the unit office in case folks want to stop by and pick us one. And also, I wanna have it available at the Harris County post office, Eliopolis, and Iannett post office, so folks can go down and get one and drop it in and drop it back to us, drop it at the school or somewhere where we can look at it. So what I'm asking tonight is, unless you guys say, immediately jump to option three and say, quit worrying about this, we'll leave things alone, if that's the case, then we can throw this away. But if you're, you're looking at doing something, I'd recommend you go ahead and approve this instrument tonight to use. On October first, we would release the survey to the public. October eleventh, then, would be the deadline for the collection of the survey. On the fifteenth, then, the unit office would tabulate the survey results. That is the day before our October board meeting. October sixteenth is the board meeting. We would then report the results of the survey to the board and to the public and let them know how people voted, what percent voted for A, B, C. At the board meeting in November, on the thirteenth, after you guys would, would give another month to think about the results, you would have to make a decision about finalizing the plan. I guess November would be the day, the one, board meeting, that you guys would have to say, let's go A, B, or C. Because when you do that, when you make your decision, it sets in motion some things that have to be done. First of all, the day after you make the decision, on November fourteenth, our administrators then would meet with our staff to share the decision with the staff on the way to board meeting. I think it's important that our staff be the first to know what your decision is. And so we would have our administrators meet with the staff and talk with them about the decision. Between January and March, unless you go with option C and leave things as is, Bruce will, will be working on bus route adjustments, because there'd be some bus route adjustments that have to be done if you, if you go the other two ways. By February first of two thousand fourteen, our administrators or principals have to have all the teacher evaluations done and turned in to manning unit office. March first ends the teacher evaluation cycle. On March first, I would then, by law, be required to issue a seventy-five-day sequential order of dismissal list to the union, to the teachers' union. Actually, seventy-five days is March seventh, but we don't wanna run it up to March seventh, so we would release the sequential order dismissal list to the union on March first of two thousand fourteen. I would also then give an informal notification to SVEA regarding the reduction in force. In other words, I would have to go to SVEA and give them the list of names that would be ripped under your decision of which plan. I would do that on March tenth. That's when I would formally notify SVEA of the rip. And then March nineteenth, the board would issue reduction in force notice to teachers if it's needed. And then sixteenth of April, then if there is any support staff that would need to have a reduction in force, those would be due on April sixteenth. Between March first and March tenth, or actually between March first and March nineteenth, I would be required, under the law, to impact bargain the rip with the teacher union if they so choose to bargain it. I would meet with them and talk about the rip and its impact on, on their teaching vehicles. So that's kind of the timeline. You see how everything has to fall in place to make sure that we meet everything that we need to meet. So.
It looks, it looks good, except I can hear it now, that we release the surveys on first and we start the tabulation. We'll get there later, and you're gonna have people say, two weeks, that's not enough time. Well, I didn't know about it.
Well, I don't know. You know, we tried to make it public. I know it's on the website and in the paper.
Has the plan been in the central?
Uh, we put an article in there for people to go to the website and find that, because these plans are out, and it'll be the entire page.
You pay your taxes?
Well, there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
There are, computer savvy.
Yeah.
I still stick with my belief, if you should, push and mail them to the registered voters. That's, that's my belief. If you want to do a true survey and get a true feeling with the community, you mail them out. Put a copy of the three plans, a copy of the survey, and stuff the envelopes, and you mail them out to people.
I think it's too costly. I mean, to go that route, we have in every one of the towns and hitting the paper, hitting the website, I mean.
Well, and that was my opinion. First of all, if you mail it to certain, to registered voters, not, not everybody may be registered voter. And, you know, the other thing being, again, I think if, if it means that much to folks and we make it as available as we can, I think folks will get out and get these things. I mean, they'll, they'll stop by the post office and get one, you know, and mail back to us to drop it off. And they only have to come to the unit office and drop it off at the school in their community. You know, we're, we're making it as accessible, I think, as, as we can make it, you know. So I think it's important to people to have a say. I think they'll take the, the time and effort to vote. Otherwise, if they don't, I mean, it's kind of like if you, if you don't vote, if you don't vote, then you're basically saying, I, I trust my, my vote to those of you who are making the decision.
I don't know if I like to vote either. I mean, it's not, it's not for a vote.
No, no, it's a survey. It's a, it's a non-binding, it's a, it's a non-binding opinion. Ultimately, U seven will, will have the dubious honor of doing the deed.
Well, I'd also, as far as the survey, I'd like to see two changes, maybe two. I'd like to see the leader option listed above at the top of the list. And I'd also like, instead of making people just choose one out of the three, I'd like to see them, you know, one, two, three, as far as their pay, the one that they would like best, and the next option that they would see, and then finally the least liked option.
Could they not write that in the comments?
They could, or they can just number one, two, three, you know, one being the one that you want, three being the one you don't want, two being your second option.
The more you, you ask the people, the problem is that you're gonna have less of response.
I, I, I would, if you have fifteen people sat at the table that way, you're gonna get out. You already handed some of these out, didn't you?
No.
Just to raise your?
No. The only thing I handed out was what was on our website to some of the older people that, I know are computer savvy.
Did you have that on all three computers?
Nope, I haven't got all three computers yet. I've been working on it. I've got some other board members I've been talking to.
Can we potentially put a tagline and ask your local board, you know, if I remember when, I don't mind the one who's picking up something, piece of paper if they can't get it, or, you know, how to drop off at the post office, regardless to go to each town and pick up, or, you know, if it's something they don't want right at the school, or if they want to mail it back in, or, or they'll ever have a common drop-off place?
It might possibly be.
Have them drop them back off at the post office, or something like that.
We can probably get our post offices close to ask it out.
Right, we can just pick it up on the other, whatever.
We could put a, we could put just a big poll or something and have people just show us, so, and be all right.
They each have, I still, they each have, they each have the interview that's open reasonably twenty-four today, so, you know, if you offer them a drop-off.
I think the main thing is, you know, this, this asset potential, you know, a major shift in the way we, we deliver educational services, it would just be nice, you know, kind of for our folks to think.
I think the average, the average on most surveys is kind of, I guess, a hundred and fifty-year-old, but I guess something like eleven percent of the damage you ask is, so I don't know how much of that, I hope I'm wrong, I don't know how much of that they taste. I wonder if you want your, um, eleven percent return on services.
I think the key is just giving folks an opportunity to do at least voice an opinion, and I think that's what we're, we're trying to do.
The figures that you have in here, are those already considering, back to again, the additional transportation, um, is that going back to the, or that would have been mentioned?
On the, on the cost savings?
Right.
Uh, we, I don't have that figured in. It's basically personnel costs. That's not gonna be your figure, because you're running buses now anyway, so, I mean, it could be just a matter of redirecting buses. Also, and I don't, if you, if you don't mind, when you're through looking, if I could get over the back and collect those.
So are we done moving the bottom option to the top like I asked?
My personal like just do what it is.
I, I, you guys tell me, hey, if you wanna do it?
I'd like to move off to three at the top.
And why is that?
Because that's the one I'd like to see at the top, first chance. That's the one I'm liking right now.
That's what, uh, I just pulled a board. What do you say, Brad?
I, I mean, I'll say about it for the top, you know, where it's at, if people are gonna be.
Well, hopefully they read all three of them before they make a decision.
I know. I was high school.
I don't care. Um, okay, I don't care, the positioning, I think you're doing it intelligently, you're gonna read the entire piece of paper before you pick one, but I did have a question as far as administration-wise. If we're looking at it from an educational standpoint, which I believe we all should be looking at from an educational standpoint at this point, do you see any kind of a, I guess my problem, I think the second option doesn't put our, put the kids together at all until they go to the middle school. And in the middle school, there is nothing but switching classes hourly, there's not, I guess in my mind, I'm not seeing them mold as a group and not having that constant classroom activity like they would in fifth grade, where they're together and forming their friendships and whatever. Do you see that as a deterrent? I mean, a problem? Do you, I know there's problems on both sides, but, yeah, I mean, I'm just asking opinions.
Okay, I don't know what I'd make of that right now. Okay.
As far as keeping the K-5, so, I mean, as far as attendance, I mean, it makes good educational sense when you have all of your kindergartners together and all of your first graders together, because your teachers are working together and they're able to share ideas and if class sizes change and you need added groups, I mean, those things just make sense.
Right.
But there's so many other things to look at with transportation of, you know, how far our little five-year-olds, you know, travel. So, you know, I see all sides of it, and the same thing with the K-5. I see pros and cons with that, too. You still have to be over community and a small school and, you know, as far as blending the kids together in sixth grade, I've been in other districts, I came from Quincy, grew up there, and... up there, and their school system, the public school system, they have lots of K three schools and they then all feed together for four, five, six, and really never ever knows the problem in fourth grade of any blending issues. So it's just something kids are used to doing because often they know each other.
Like Springfield does the same thing. They have five and six elementaries that pour into one, or two junior high schools or whatever. So I just, I didn't know if you guys have witnessed anything, but I think it's nice in a sense that they do them together in the fifth grade classroom and do them a little bit more one-on-one, kind of, kind of bonding time, but I guess that's something you can call it. But I just didn't know what your opinions were going to strengthen the junior high like that.
Junior high, no matter what, is a tough age.
No, I guess, I guess I would, I got to feel the same way Stephanie, whatever, I guess I feel with you. That's something that we talked about. I brought several products over the last couple of years. And once my daughter got to fifth grade, kind of got to mingle with the Harris Town people, the relationships that have been built there, whatever, the opportunity that's given to my daughter. I hear the same thing this year from parents that I've talked to at JFL, whose kids are now, you know, in fifth grade, and I think it's better, I guess, better to go positive for those kids. And the sooner that we can get together in that situation, I think it'll be better, you know, a positive for everybody's got to talk about here. But I think it'll also do a lot, you know, for our community, for everybody on the same page and whatever. I think there's also, as far as the teaching, like you guys were talking about, like, there's a lot of opportunities there to, for the teachers to work together, you know, I think there's some opportunities there, too, as far as the title work and RTI and stuff like that, effectively, I'll be focused in a lot better if they were working on a specific age group versus K three five, you know, those of that.
I'll say one last thing, you know, I'm not in favor of the tennis center, thanks that we, those that are attractive and was a help promote the consolidation, as people got to keep their great schools. And I think, in the end, if, I'll be surprised if people don't say, "Leave it," since I'm not saying the way it is. And I'm already hearing comments from all three communities about that, you know, you said, this is what you told us ten years ago, that you're going to keep our great schools. And as far as blending kids, I think the kids answered that question the first day I, some of my school kids, my youngest was in the first graduating class there, he said, yeah, he says, he says, we were, it was okay by noon the first day, you know, first school day, lunchtime, everything was fine. He did that here. He said, "Children may have a problem, but none of the kids anymore," so that's my view.
One biggest question is, is Bruce here?
Yeah.
Bruce? Kindergartners, Eliottas kindergartners do second grade. How long are they potentially going to be on a bus from Eliottas to Harris Town through all seasons?
Or Lanesville.
Or Lanesville?
Approximately forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes?
Yeah. That's approximate. It could stretch close to an hour.
Close to an hour for a kindergarten on a bus?
Depending on, I haven't actually run what you've talked about, I mean, from Harris Town straight over to Eliottas, but then you hit Lanesville, too.
And plus your stops when you take them.
Yeah, and you're trying to make your stops, too. We have a bus now that cuts across from, she makes her run at Eliottas and then she drops at Eliottas, and she picks up two children and takes them to Harris Town.
So basically, what you're saying is probably going to be a minimum of forty-five minutes, possibly, as long as an hour or longer?
A minimum of forty-five.
I just don't like saying a long bus that long in the winter.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the distribution and collection of the survey. Is anybody have a problem with voting the number three and the number one?
No.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the distribution and collection of the community survey with the timeline specified by the superintendent and rearrange the order of suppression of the three components, or one and three, that's the one I'm voting.
Before we vote, you are going to put the central at these locations there, are you saying?
Yes, there's a public notice. I was going to put that, and I was also going to hang that in the location.
And that's going to be in the central, too?
Yes, that's what the goal is.
I'm going to get my camera. May I listen to any, same with my stuff, oh, please.
Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Stone?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
No.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Ed Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Okay. Bass program.
That was another item that we had proposed, and I think Jason, Jason, are you here?
Yep.
Jason's here. We had divided that. I think I've given some, a recommendation. Jason, you want to say anything about it?
I can if you'd like me to, it doesn't matter. I wasn't here at the last meeting, I know it got tabled. I did get some information to Mr. Fowler, that was just basically a proposal that suggested where costs would be or where you'd save basically not spend on the bass fishing program. I really think it will basically run itself for the most, for the most part. Transportation was an issue that came up. I'm not aware of other schools that actually transport to, say, practices and, you know, I kind of saw it like, I'll use Coach Myers again, in case he's still here. If he has, if he has a basketball practice on Saturday, there's no busing, there's nothing available to the kids, they get to the practice, you know, they get their rides home. I do know of a school that buses to the IHSA sanctioned events, and that might be something the school district would be interested in doing if, if they followed through and decide to have the bass program, so.
And all in all, in looking at the proposal that Jason provided, I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be a big cost for the district to give the kids an opportunity, you know, another opportunity. So I, I don't have any problem, Jason, in recommending the board approve the program.
Can I ask again, how many kids can be on a boat?
When you get to the IHSA sectionals, you can technically fish four kids in a boat, two at a time. So two for the first half of the day, and then they would swap out two more for the second half. And then each school can, they can enter two boats total. So you could have a maximum of eight kids during the day of an IHSA sanctioned event.
If you have twelve kids, if they enter this program, just going to rotate?
Usually that comes down to if they enter some other tournaments along the way, which we've talked about. A lot of the area schools offer tournaments and teams use those as practices, if you will. It'd be like having a golf match. You go out, your best scorers are your JV and your varsity. So I would, I would, I guess, see it as those would be the practices for the kids that compete, and then that's how you determine your top competitors that you send to IHSA. And you can also do skills practices as well, you know, lots of techniques and things involved.
What's our estimate, then, of what's going to cost this, I guess?
I figured probably on the high side, twelve hundred dollars, and based on what Jason said, I don't think we'll approach that.
I, I wouldn't think so. Like I said, the only thing that, that would concern me would be transportation, which I, I can't estimate that. I don't know what transportation would cost if you bust to an IHSA event. Then the cost, if, let's say, a team does qualify for state, state is a two-day tournament, and students actually are down there Thursday night, they, they pre-fish, actually, I think they pre-fish, they might go down Wednesday night, they pre-fish Thursday, and then they have two days of tournament, Friday and Saturday. So I know there are costs involved there, I don't know how the district would handle that, but that's, you know, that would be down the road if that actually happens. There's no guarantee that that's going to happen, that you're going to qualify for state.
Again, I think I, at one time, I think I gave you guys a ballpark estimate on the proposal, I think it's all around twelve hundred, and I'm telling you that that's probably higher than.
Here's, here's one issue that I have. Some of our middle school sports, we reduced the number of league games, is that correct? We have a week, have a week, I'm not, you know, I've been honored to ask me or whatever, we've had any games.
That was like, three years ago, we narrowed down volleyball, middle school volleyball, middle school baseball, middle school girls' basketball, middle school volleyball. Went from like nineteen to fifteen. Baseball went from like fifteen to ten, middle school baseball.
And I've had quite a few parents that have asked me, you know, over the last few years, whatever, you know, why, why have we had as many games, what's the issue there, you know, and I know that they brought this up to Josh or whatever, people have asked him about it. My concern is with now, you know, here we can cut some sports, we cut our athletics or whatever, and we've got our middle school, which, you know, if it possibly puts a competitive estimate, HML will ready to go along and add sport, and along, it's not, it serves a very large number of kids.
And again, I think we need, what we do, we need to cap the number of camps that we can.
I say, is this, this is an effective sparse title line, does it, I mean, is this technically the overall student?
Yeah, 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 it wouldn't be, I don't believe it would be.
Is, I guess, question, I, I'm on the same page as you, we're cutting, cutting, cutting in every, every area of the school and then adding a program, kind of seems like it's defeating our purposes, but is there a way that we can, I know we still have girls' basketball money in the fund, is there a way that we can transfer for this year? We don't have girls' basketball anymore posted here. Is that legal to transfer money to them for this year, see how it goes, maybe they can fundraise for next year, that type of thing, as far as supporting the sport more in and of themselves?
I would probably be careful about using, like, and.
Are there questions?
Where's the, where's the turn? We're cutting some of the other sports, but how do they stack up as far as cost? And I know some of the high school sports cost a budget close to eleven thousand dollars. I mean, this is a way to, you know, we're going to give something up here, but we're going to bring this in, but it's a little cheaper and still allows kids to participate.
I just feel like, we've made some cuts here to our community or athletics, and I just, I guess, I just don't feel comfortable doing that or whatever, this point or whatever, I just don't feel like, we've already made some cuts. You know, we, we've cut some people's salaries and stuff along those lines, too, you know, it'd have been pretty, pretty minimal cost savings to the school district, but, you know, we went ahead and did it, and I just, I don't feel comfortable adding more to this one.
Well, we're also talking about the sixth grade sports as well. Being the fact they're considered middle school and making a reduction in some of the sixth grade sports, I think it's definitely an important decision that Pat's talking about, need to consider. I mean, I support the bass program, but, you know, we have to keep in mind that.
If you give them a year, see how much it costs. I think Jason's been doing everything possible to fundraise, or we should maybe help out a little bit, I mean, give them a year, I mean, basically.
I've, I've started doing fundraising, trying to help fix some of this, and right now I've got, right at five hundred, Alex pledge from local businesses to help me promote this program.
I hear the minus, so give them a year, see what the cost, you know, wouldn't, just fundraise, we should get some sponsors.
We got a motion on here, I'll call it, I'll load it up, load it down. Need a motion to approve a high school bass fishing program with utilization of non-paid volunteers, I hope you see that. I make a motion to, okay. There's seconds, I can say number eight, oh, please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Stone?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Um, yes, I'd like to add in the reevaluation in one year.
Ed Peters, no?
Presentable? Yes.
Ed Peters, yes. Okay. Here we go, fellas. Good luck. Okay, we need a motion to adopt the thirteen, fourteen school district.
So, no.
Okay, a motion to second. Mike Stone? Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Stone?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Ed Peters?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a captain, Brown. This is Jack from Hudson's form, he'll sign the case, I, here, but you can't get mine as I signed with the names, but I've got to file that with the state board, I've got to file that with the state board, and with the county clerk, and with the regional office of education. I have to sign that.
Approval of the FY thirteen annual audit.
Floyd and Associates are our auditors. I gave you a bound copy of the audit. I can tell you that Floyd gave us a good review on our audit, and I noticed the impetus findings. I talked with Julie Floyd, who was a primary auditor, to ask her, did we do anything wrong with our accounting and principles? She said, "No, everything looked good." It does look like we will receive financial recognition status at the beginning this year with this finding, so I'm going to ask you to approve the audit. You're welcome if you'd like to take those audits home for you to read. If you're not interested in reading them, I get them back because sometimes agencies call and request, and those cost money, and I consider them based on what she's already given, so.
I just wanted to say thank you to you, the administration, to the governor, and I spoke about here tonight, about as good a shape as we possibly have to be in, considering states down in Mississippi. My personal note, thank you, thank you very much. Any questions or comments on this audit? Do we not, if yours matched, we have some, haven't kind of looked through, there's some of the.
Yeah, and they kind of got away with it because of the boring board members today and everything. One of the most boring people you can ever hope to listen to is, is an auditor that sat through many audit presentations.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the annual audit completed by Floyd and Associates. Motion made by Stephanie, there's a second. Second by Brad Stolow, oh, please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Stone?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Ed Peters?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson is here to make an annual request on the FFA convention for Mr. Johnson. The floor is yours.
I'm going to turn it over to our president, Mr. Maney. Thank you, everybody. I'm here to ask for approval of the board members and the administration for us, for the, the seven of FFA members that attend the National Bank Convention this year, it's down in Louisville, will be attending October thirtieth, thirty-first, and November first will be returning. Will be attending the career show at the convention as well as the opening session, we're going to do a couple of look sessions. We'll also be touring a couple of the local businesses in downtown Louisville, and I might have experience going to these, it's a great opportunity for the FFA members to know, I mean, it shows a lot of opportunities they can pursue with the FFA, the career show, college and stuff, they, gives them a good view on how, what the FFA is, but I think it'd be a great opportunity, so. Anything else, is there any questions for me?
Good day. Who are you, the speaker, most important?
Um, those are Cardinals, Louisville Cardinals, Mass. And this is not a cost of the district, they have FFA six-year cost for trips, on us, but when you go across state lines, then we need to support, give permission for that.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the FFA request for the national convention in Louisville. That was made on night, sent to Stephanie, seconded by Kim. Louisville, that, that, motion made by Mike, second by Stephanie, second by Kim, hold please.
Kim Brown? Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Leonard Williams?
Yes.
Okay, next on the list is, uh, request to use Eliotus campus for the village.
And that's on October twenty-sixth, uh, they have already provided a certificate of insurance, this has been past practice that we've done that, uh, we've never had a problem with it, I recommend go ahead and approve that.
Questions or comments on that? Not, we need a motion to approve the request for use of the campus at Eliotus by the village of Eliotus for the annual outing, and, 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 and number, second by Stephanie, hold please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Leonard Williams?
Yes.
Okay, approval of administrator salary compensation report.
About all that stuff in the hands to be adopted by the board, I recommend approval.
Questions or comments on that? Yeah, we need a motion to approve the administrator salary compensation reports that is required by P eight nine six dash oh three. Motion made by Stephanie, second by Mike Oakley, hold please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Hold please. Yes. Okay, approval of the FY thirteen teacher administrator salary benefit report.
And we transmit that to the state board, um, I recommend.
Okay, there are questions or comments on that, and we need a motion to approve the FY thirteen teacher administrator salary benefit report, as required by the Illinois State Board. Motion made by Mike Starbuck, second by Kim, hold please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Hold please. Yes. Uh, videotaping policy, second reading.
We had, I'd given you that videotaping policy, I think during the last board meeting, we did a first reading, we didn't make any changes, um, I guess recommend approval of your.
How much does that give them to do that?
It was about, uh, anywhere from one to two hundred dollars. Well, I got, if you hire a, a person to do it.
And that's per meeting?
Yes.
So, we have additional meetings that have.
That would be more, but keep in mind, the, the way I worded the policy, I, I worded it so that it's permissive, and you could word may, not shall, so you could do it if you want to do it, you don't have to do it.
And if he, you know, I probably said this before, maybe I thought it, I'm not sure, but we talked about potentially having a class do it, like publication or something like that, is that something?
That would have to be something that the teacher would just agree to do, I mean, you couldn't assign it, you wouldn't activate it, they wanted to do it as a class project or something. Uh, but that's, that's it, I mean, we, right now, we, we don't have, like I said, the way the policy is written, it, it allows you to, to name and hire an official videographer if you want to do that, you don't have to, it just allows you to if you want.
Yeah, as well, no, I, I hired a videographer, you know, and Amy Rankin with Rad Focus, I'm getting it done for about sixty dollars an hour, thirty dollars for the taking, thirty dollars for the editing, so sixty dollars an hour per meeting.
And who edits it?
What's there to edit?
We, uh, what do we do to it, Amy?
I just, uh, basically cut it from the beginning to the end and export to five.
Are you starting that before the meetings? I noticed that red light was on.
No.
Before the red light was on, that, that, that made a camera roll?
The red light means the battery's on.
Right. Because on my camera, red light's on, it's stable.
And as you can see from the video though, the beginning and end, I mean, that's, and there's no cuts made in the middle of it, except for closed session.
I've, I've never watched one, because I personally don't think it's necessary, it's just my bad.
While we're on that, since I'm paying to have the meetings taped, I would, I would like to put the storm low above, you know, my tape, it's on YouTube, what do I need to do to make a request to get that done?
I think the, the board probably needs to approve that, they might do that.
So, I need to make a request to the board?
Yeah.
For the next meeting?
Yeah, that's a good idea, and then you can take action on it. Just remind me and put it on the agenda.
I will.
Okay. Uh, we need a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the district videotaping policy. Make that motion. Me. Motion made by Mike, is her second?
Sure.
Motion second, that's there, please. Kim Brown?
No.
Mike Starbuck?
No.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
So, Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Go ahead. Leonard Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we still under the business?
Well, yeah, we're going to put in some re-bid, yeah.
Okay. It's not, I'm just, I, I'll.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to, here, closed session for the recent state of Michigan.
No.
Motion made by Kim, is her second? Second by Mike Oakley, hold please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Leonard Williams?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the closed session, minutes and red and closed session.
Summit.
Motion made by Kim, second by Mike Starbuck, hold please.
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Leonard Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the resignation of Brad, Brad Manlos, who's best already effective September eleventh, two thousand thirteen. Motion made by Mike Starbuck, second by Mike Starbuck, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Uh, we need a motion to employ Wendy Brackless, high school basketball cheer coach. Motion made by Stephanie, is her second? Second by Brad, hold please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Leonard Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion to employ Denver Couser as middle school special education teacher. Motion made by Mike Starbuck, is her second? Second by Thad Peters, hold please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Yes. Need a motion to employ Denver Couser as JV high school scholar, hold please. Motion made by Thad, second by Stephanie, hold please. Kim Brown?
No.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Leonard Williams?
Yes.
Here in Hagan, uh, motion to employ Carrie Castile as a five and a half hour custodian in the district.
Summit.
Motion made by Stephanie, is her second?
Second.
Second by Kim, hold please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Yes. Have a motion to recall E.D. Hastings and Sherri Morgan to an eight-hour custodial shift from the reduction of the force issued to them in the spring of two thousand thirteen.
Summit.
Motion made by Kim, second by Mike Starbuck, hold please. Kim Brown?
Yes.
Mike Starbuck?
Yes.
Mike Oakley?
Yes.
Stephanie Gero?
Yes.
Thad Peters?
Yes.
Brad Stolow?
Yes.
Leonard Williams?
Yes.